P. D. Or, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could do the roll call or what's our question?
President Don.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Gaten.
Here.
Secretary Prince.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Lozore. Action. And, um, I'm sorry. Freddy Zimmerman.
President.
What's her name?
Just look and go around the room.
I know.
All right, thank you. Uh, Sean, did you turn about when the conservation happened?
Yeah, I did. Uh, goal number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. The conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. The conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of county's open space. Goal two, to acquire and maintain other wild and scenic areas in open spaces for conservation purposes and for educational and recreational use.
Great, thank you. Five point zero rating, you are, is the pledge?
Yeah. Uh, we've pledged to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number nine, we will provide outdoor places to reflect, play, and interact with family, friends, and community.
Great, thank you. All right, move on, and the mayor acting a motion to adopt the agenda. I will say adopt the agenda. A's been moved.
I will second that.
Move the vote, please.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, that moves us to seven point oh, special recognition and presentation program. We'll start, uh, with the recognition of the outgoing McHenry County Conservation Foundation Board members and directors. We have them here.
Um, I do not believe they're online. I don't know if Vice President Everard wanted his liaison to the foundation.
Yeah, uh, they were, they were both at the meeting and they stayed for the duration of the meeting, which went till like almost ten o'clock. Um, between the, let's see, Ray, it fell on the left side of the picture there, Dennis. I think he had nine years on the foundation and Ray on the right had eleven years with the foundation. So they're just outstanding. Um, Dennis was a state biologist, so actually, wait, uh, Ray, Ray was a state biologist. So just, uh, you know, really brought a lot to the, to the party, just great guys.
Good. Well, there's some, yes, so a big thank you, go talk to them.
Absolutely, and then they'll cross over, just like the trustees, once you leave, they fill through as ambassadors in that role and will be very instrumental in still the work that we have. But it's great to see that, um, there's a pipeline of new trustees that are, that the board has appointed, um, that are coming on board and, and just, I can't say enough about the stewardship of, of the board and everything, so, uh, great job.
And the outgoing ones were, or were the incoming and coming ones were at the, uh, party on Saturday?
Yes, we did have, um, uh, from, uh, Jack Castle, from Buffalo Nursery, who's a newer member, and then, um, our other newer trustee, Wendy, Wendy, uh, was there too, not at the event, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, good. All right, well, thank you to that. Point two, uh, we're gonna swear in Sergeant tonight.
Yep.
So I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, Chief, okay. All right, tonight we're gonna swear in Sergeant Xavier to his position. Um, he started his sergeant position a few months ago, but again, we wanna make this kind of cool to come up in front of the board and, and do a formal swearing in. Uh, he brought his wife tonight, so thank you for coming, and some of our team is here to support as well. Sergeant Xavier's been in law enforcement thirty-six years, and this will be his sixth oath of office he just shared with me. So it's, it's great that he's here, he's brought a lot to the team. He's, uh, been helping us out a lot with evidence management and accreditation, training coordination, and then a lot of the day-to-day things around the, the department. So it's been, been a great help, he's been a great help to me, he was a former chief. So maybe being a newer chief, having somebody like Dan I can, uh, you know, get in his ear about, it's been, been great, so he's been a great mentor, we appreciate him. Let's do this, oath of office.
All right.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me, this is the official oath. Hi, Daniel Xavier, have you been appointed as a police sergeant?
I, Daniel Xavier, have been appointed as a police sergeant
for the McHenry County Conservation District in the county of McHenry, a four set.
For the McHenry County Conservation District and the county of Henry, four set.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police sergeant to the best of my ability.
Of the office of police sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. Chief, I don't wanna put you in the spot, but, uh, I'd like maybe the rest of the, the four sets here, maybe introduce themselves or do something to the, to the.
Yep, of course.
Appreciate you coming.
My name's Patrick Donahue, uh, I have about two years on here now, coming up on my, uh, starting my third year. I worked for the sheriff's office for three and a half years, and I was with the Chicago Police Department for twenty-two years.
Oh, wow, good, well.
I've been, uh, through a couple hunting seasons and fishing seasons and everything, and I really like it.
Good, very good.
Yep, I've had, been there, done that, as, as Sergeant Dan has, you know, as far as experience in law enforcement. So these guys bring a lot to the table, and it's just a huge asset to have them on our team.
Good.
I don't think anybody's met Dan yet.
Hello, everybody, I'm Daniel Margis, I'm one of the new officers here. I started February fifth, uh, so I'm here in part of the field training process, so we're one of the new officers here for the district. Uh, I come from Harper Cottage Police Department, well, I've been there for about four and a half years. Uh, so I'm here looking forward to learning what the district and what's this fund does for, for the communities.
Probably like thirteen years.
Uh, thirteen years, uh, with the army, uh, so pre-defendants overseas.
Excellent, oh, great, glad to have you.
Thank you. I'm Ryan McCoskey, I've been with the district for five years. Um, I'm local, I'm from the area, I'm from Underlake. Are the, do CPR instruction, uh, one of our drone operators.
Hi, uh, Chris Garrison, been here since fourteen, uh, started here from the beginning, uh, going on ten years.
Great.
And Chris also serves on the department for the McHenry County Multi Jurisdiction SWAT team as well.
Okay.
Officer Charlie Montgomery, started my career here, uh, fourteen years, it'll be fifteen in a week.
Excellent.
Sergeant Ben Wolf, uh, going on my seventeenth year, uh, tonight. Ten years, not on trial. They're not our trial. Oh.
Uh, my name is Arturo, I've been here for about eighteen months now, uh, enjoyed every, every minute of it. This is a great team, good organization. Um, I also served with Ryan as a CPR first aid, AD instructor, um, for the, the district, and so we're hoping to be able to, uh, revamp and expand some of that, that training, um, not only for our first founder, but just district-wide in general.
Great, well, thank you, you did a good job helping, uh, the other night at the.
Oh, yeah, and of course, that was part of the employee. We're hoping to, uh, to keep that going and well.
Good, good, thank you, well, thank you all.
Hi, guys, have a good night.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. So we're gonna check that box?
I think maybe, but, but it's up to you.
We, as far as, uh, Amelia?
Um, my pleasure to introduce our new IT Systems Administrator, Amelia Tepner. Um, Amelia comes from the city of Crystal Lake, she was there for two years as a senior IT specialist. Where she did a lot of the same things, she oversaw their networks, did a lot of the break fix, uh, did the mains, uh, support answering calls from staff, so a really good mirror there. Her references couldn't say enough good things about this woman, the, uh, I've never had references like that, and she was basically could fix anything, uh, technical computer-wise, doing a little bit. Prior to that, she was with, uh, S Shoreline Computers in McHenry County for seven years, where, uh, again, setting up networks, set up computer systems, a lot of rate fix support. Um, and again, the reference services were impeccable. We had a big response for this position, we had fourteen candidates. Um, after two interviews, we heard it out of two really good candidates, Amelia and another lady were very strong. Um, so we actually brought it in for a third round, and that third round included six district employees doing the interview as the interview panel. We had them do a presentation on an IT-related subject matter, and it was about a fifteen, twenty-minute presentation with questions and answers from that, but then they had to take a written test. Um, I really thought when I introduced this, because I thought I had two really qualified candidates, one of them might say, no thanks, I'm not gonna go through all that, but they both did. Luckily they did, because when we got done with that, it was a really easy decision. Amelia really shined in all three areas, so exceptional. Um, she's met with us for over a month, and it's, if it's not daily, it's almost daily where I'm getting an email about a new way of doing something, new procedural change, um, some savings she's come across. One example, I shared with the leadership team just last week, uh, she sent me an email. We had one of our hiring laptops, normally they're eight or nine hundred bucks, some of the more high ends that are loaded up, um, to do things like JS, it's close to fourteen hundred dollars. Reaching its end of life, I think it was just a couple months out of end-of-life cycle. So normally, something like that breaks, it's three years old, we just fly the bill, we don't quit time and try and repair it. For thirty dollars, she found a part, I guess it had been dropped, and it didn't open up, it's thirty dollars in an hour's time, fixing things, so that's, you know, back, I had very huge savings and so a set of things were, were staying all the time. Um, so again, like to walk the board, and we're really excited to have them.
Excellent, thank you.
David, it's a pleasure to work here at the district. When people ask me why I applied for this job, they said it felt like it was a job made for me. And not only that, but I used to enjoy all these beautiful sights and see all the nature and everything else that's going on with it, so a lot of perks.
Yeah, good, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do we wanna bring Daniel back in?
Just real quick, I don't mind starting now.
We did, yes.
I, I forgot to mention, he did, uh, put himself through the National Park Service Academy out of Colorado, which told me that he wanted to do this type of law enforcement, which is super important to us as a district, knowing, uh, he's certified, um, and he wants to do this type of law enforcement, meaning he's not just gonna go near to the experience and reach, so, um, that was a huge plus with, with Dan, so brings a lot to the team, we're, we're really glad to have him.
Is that? Good.
Ryan's at the Academy, is that police, right?
Yeah, they do a lot more than the Academy.
Yeah, a lot.
Yes, so, five, a five-months training program out of Colorado, uh, where, uh, been, they offer about seven different academy locations throughout the country. I just chose Colorado, and go out there, and then somewhere came back to Illinois, but again, was another heaven here in states, in these states.
Excellent, well, welcome again. Thanks, Ryan. Good. Having a lot of good team members. Okay, trustees report. There any reports from any committees or, uh, things that they saw on to? John, you got anything?
Yeah, um, so the big one was, I attended the conference with Elizabeth and staff, so that was like three cool days spent downtown in the city. Um, God, I could say so, I could probably talk for an hour about it, but, um, I attended, uh, six sessions during that timeframe.
We do it forty-five minutes, so.
Yeah, yeah, I attended six sessions, and I have to tell you that, um, the majority of those were from our staff, and it's just amazing to see, uh, the experience and knowledge. And, um, in, in our staff, their presentation skills are just amazing, you know, and in packed rooms for, for these presentations that our staff was giving, I mean, you know, packed rooms, hardly any, any seats left, and that was, um, you know, just delighting to see, you know, to be able to, to be proud of the staff and what we have to bring to the table for the entire state to learn from, you know, the things that we've done. Um, so, um, the, the find your wild was a big one, lots of questions about that, it was really cool, so there's, uh, you know, there was so many, there was a few different park districts giving similar presentations, but I have to say ours just blew people out of the box, I mean, they're really good. Yeah, so they were handing out the stickers, and people are trading them and trying to find out which ones they want, you know, during the process, so that was kinda cool. Um, also went to the awards conference, um, I was lucky enough to, uh, kind of be sandwiched between, uh, Rep. Susan Ness and I think it was Becky from Dewitt's office, Senator Dewitt's office, so that was kinda neat. I was able to, to talk with both of them, they kinda know each other, and, um, you know, I was able to kinda spread the word of what we're doing and some of our needs and what our needs are here for the district to, to, you know, representatives, uh, at the state level, so that was great. We had great conversation during that luncheon, it's like a two, two-hour luncheon, um, so I enjoyed that. Also, lastly, went to the employee appreciation party on Saturday night, um, so that was wonderful, and uh, I just wanna thanks to, you know, that engagement committee, um, Arturo, he was, he was really cool, just walking around and kinda being like an ambassador, you know, wasn't it? Yeah, he did a great job, I was really impressed, um. It was a good venue, I think it was perfect for the staff, everyone seemed like they had a great time. I sure did, I got to meet a lot of the staff that I didn't know, and, um, and, and alls I can say is I hope that we can continue to do that, because it really seemed like it took off, you know, so.
Sure, sure, you left a little early, though, you missed, uh, the dancing. Somebody that can really dance here, that's talented.
Who's that?
Elizabeth.
You guys in video?
I didn't wanna do that. What, what happens there stays there.
Yeah, what stays, we gotta be there, come next year.
So, yeah, overall, thanks to the district and the board for support of things like, you know, staff being able to go to the conference, I, I think that's, that's a huge, uh, learning opportunity and connecting opportunity for staff and, and board members, um, and, uh, you know, so just making those funds available.
So we're gonna include that stuff in budgets.
I do, yeah, I think it's really funny, so, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Ray, you got anything?
No.
Not yet.
Word related.
A couple, green drinks? Yep. Um, green, I don't know if it's becoming more popular or something, we had, it was like a full house, fifty-six people, I think, were in the room and twenty on, on Zoom. Um, the topic was fungi, and there's a guy there, a local fellow, who's an, an actual expert on this stuff, and he's doing all kinds of things, uh, one of the things he's doing is making biodegradable, uh, containers for planting, so he makes them out of the roots, the rhizomes of the fungi, and, you know, so you just put the plant in there, you can either use it as a planter or put it in the ground, but more importantly, he's working on, uh, the chemistry, um, trying to, in fact, he's got two different kinds of fungi that can dissolve plastic. In the company that he works for, that's what they're working on, is trying to address, um, landfill issues, where you could go in and, and, you know, spread the spores and they would actually dissolve. He had, he brought in a microscope where he could project what was in the microscope, and he brought different samples of these fungi, and he showed us two of them, the brachy, breaking down, you could see, the, the fungi was literally inside of a Ziploc bag, and it was dissolving the bag. So, yeah, so that was, uh, pretty fascinating, and he did, the guy did a great job. If anybody goes to the, the Dole Mansion, they have that, uh, once a month or so, they have that, uh, it's a, I figure they call it, but.
Fourth Fridays?
Yeah, no, the, the.
Farmer's market?
Farmer's market.
Oh, that's every, yeah, every Sunday.
Yeah, they do that in.
Oh, it's crazy.
Uh-huh.
He's, he's there quite often, but selling different types of mushrooms, so he's got an Irish cap.
Now you say that.
Young guy, real energetic, and man, he knows the stuff, you know.
He's the fungi guy, huh?
Yeah, he's a, there you go.
He's a fungi.
Mungus, mungus.
Yeah. Couple other things, um, they went through the, uh, Elizabeth presented the comp program, and, um, Sean, who's the director of the foundation, her, her compensation, well, actually, the cost of the foundation staffing is split fifty-fifty between, uh, the district and, and the foundation. So Elizabeth described the compensation program that we just went through, the analysis and the changes that we made, and, and then there was a long discussion, an executive session, about, uh, Sean's compensation, how do we handle that, and, uh, the two outgoing board members were making a big plea to, to adjust her compensation significantly, so it was a long discussion. It ended with, uh, suggesting to consider a bonus program for her, and, uh, so they're considering that. Um, I put one together real quick for them to look at, so next month I'll, I'll take a look at it again and, and decide. But anyway, planting a seed, I think that's a, it's something, it's a, a good thing to look at for pay for, pay for performance, where you put specific objectives together based on their objectives, and if they hit certain metrics, then there's, there'll be additional compensation, so anyway, that's, that'll be under consideration for next month. The elected officers, the same officers were reelected, so there's no change there. And, uh, lastly, they, they approved a thirty thousand dollar closing cost for a project, so pretty exciting. So, long meeting, but, uh, a lot, gonna let that.
Good, good, okay, also Kevin's the president, so, so he's quite a dancer also.
Oh, is that right?
Yes. Won't you lean that out? No, I didn't.
Sure, I missed it now.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else, you got any?
Farm Bureau meeting last week, and the, the main program we had was, somebody came from the state, our Bureau membership is declining, and just like in agriculture, everybody's getting older, and there's no young leaders to take over, so they're kinda like, um, doing a big study and, and, uh, trying to find out or figure out how to get young people involved. We got the same problem with, with our county Farm Bureau.
Is that nationwide or just the state?
Um, it's, it's, it's nationwide, yeah.
Did you hear about the FFA's in Wisconsin and the others?
And one of, one of the topics brought up is an FFA, if you're in ag class, you're automatically in FFA, you don't have to join. So they're trying, they're, it was kind of an idea brought up with the Farm Bureau, you know, if you're a certain age, you know, you're automatically a member, trying to get people engaged. But, um, a lot of people don't realize that that's the voice of the, of agriculture, starts, you know, laws and, and, uh, all that other kind of stuff, and then the way, if there's no Farm Bureau, we just can run over.
Well, it's just, society's going nowadays, anyways, seems like, you know, we won't go into that discussion, but, uh, yeah, okay, fine. All right, Linda, anything, are you in? All right. Seven point oh, you're on. Oh, come on. You got a, you got a good story, you got a good story. Might have been out, it might have been out last month. With Ronay beer or anything like? Oh, well, that, but that wouldn't be the liaison. Okay. But I could get Elizabeth dancing if we brought the beer. All right, president's report. Um, I think we did talk a little bit about the historic structures meeting we had last Monday. Um, he had a good presentation by Amy Peters, um, the four selected, was four, right? Uh, selected structures.
Or properties.
Properties, I should say. Um, so, yeah, I would like to, we need to probably figure out, uh, going forward, anybody wanting to be on the committee for historic structure, and then we can, uh, start moving forward and select the structures that we wanna focus on first, I think. Um, and we've had some discussion, uh, with that, and, uh, so we wanna try, I think we've been focused on a couple of little properties and then, uh, move forward with those, so. Uh, also working behind the scenes, uh, with staff, uh, within, uh, intergovernmental agreement with the Hebron Drainage District, hopefully we got a draft copy that'll be approved by the Drainage District this week, and then we'll be able to come back and get a final form of that and get signed and hopefully have that done, that's, so. Otherwise, I, that's about it for what I have to report, we'll go to public comments, number one. Anybody out there?
I don't see any hands raised.
No hands raised, no.
There were, um, I don't know the Samsung, and there's a couple names that I don't recognize, but I don't know if they have any comments.
Yeah, it would break them up if they did, so, okay. We'll come back for that one more time anyways, so. All right, twelve point zero, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to? Okay, move to approve that? We have to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, we have a second? Okay, ready? Um, we need to.
We need to read through the consent agenda.
Read the first, and then, yeah, that's what I'm, sorry about that. Go ahead, Dan.
That's okay.
Twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings, twelve point one A, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, Committee of the Walms. Twelve point one B, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Um, twelve point, Treasury, twelve point two Treasury report, twelve point two A, acceptance of Treasury report for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, is presented. Twelve point, uh, two B, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, quarter three, general fund variance report. Twelve point three, resolution twenty-four dash oh six, resolution authorizing the destruction of listed verbatim recordings of executive sessions, meetings prior to January twenty twenty-two in compliance with Illinois Open Meetings Act. Twelve point four, resolution twenty-four dash oh seven, resolution authorizing release of the lit, of the listed executive session meeting, meeting, meeting minutes to the public domain in compliance with Illinois Open Meetings Act. Uh, twelve point five, resolution twenty-four dash oh eight, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute five months, two months residence, lease license agreements as regented to the term of April first, twenty twenty-four to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Twelve point six, authori, authorization to prepare specifications of letting of bids for hiring contractors to treat invasive space species at the, at three high priority restoration projects. Twelve point seven, resolution twenty-four point dash oh nine, resolution authorizing the exec, execution of Second Amendment to intergovernmental agreement granting a license for a facility used pertaining to the US FWS and their use of office space at a lost valley visitor center by the refuge manager of the Hakam Attack National Refuge, Wildlife Refuge. Twelve point eight, resolution twenty-four dash ten, resolution authorizing the executive director to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the McHenry County Sheriff's Office for the Countywide Police Social Work Program for the term of May first, twenty twenty-four to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, for annual average annual cost of twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars. Twelve point nine, resolution twenty-four dash eleven, resolution ratifying the executive director's execution of change order, number one, the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars with Hay and Associates Incorporated of Bolo, Illinois, with just a project scope to include additional options to improve the safety of identified sections of trail within existing corridor of the Prairie Trail resurfacing and rehabilitation project from hillside to the rain street in Crystal Lake. Um, good. The move.
So, we have a, uh, motion and seconded, so now we can roll down.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes. Good, thank you. That wasn't too bad.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to other board business. Let's go to Treasurer Gaten. Move to request.
Yeah, so, um, we have thirteen, uh, point one A, the internal audit. Um, Sean, I believe you requested some invoices to be pulled. I do not have the numbers handy that we have.
Hi, yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, I tried to. Do you have?
That was for last month and we put new ones, so we did pull in this packet you see from last month. And then you did request, and so we'll have that for the following month.
Correct.
But for the record, I don't, email, I don't see this. You can pull it up. The ones you just recently pulled, it'll come up in March.
I have.
Just the names.
Okay, yeah, you, you had it quicker than I was.
We've got time.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, uh, five thirty one and we have six o'clock. For that, very soon.
Is that invoice twenty two oh seven?
A vendor twenty two oh seven, or is it?
Um, invoice G eighty eight eighty two, Gold Shield Detective Agency for hundred and six dollars and eighty five cents. Here's, uh, uh, invoice H sixty seven sixty seven, Harris Computer Systems M S I, and the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred and three dollars and sixty two cents. Uh, sorry, I'm a date of one twenty four twenty four. When I requested two, two Monaros purchases. Invoice one forty one fifty on one twenty nine of twenty twenty four. Uh, repair supplies, R one residence and the amount of thirty one ninety. And then, uh, invoice one forty one ninety nine on one twenty nine, twenty four. Handy cart handle for Brookdale, that was for fifty nine ninety nine. And then, um, one last pull was, uh, under petty cash. Uh, number eight, petty cash, uh, event supplies for eighteen dollars and seventy three cents. That's it.
Good, thank you for that.
I apologize, I'm not even that for you.
Your question. I will move on to, uh, thirteen point one B, uh, I will make a motion, uh, for the consideration to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending January thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second. Dave's been moved and seconded.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yeah.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes.
Right, so we will move to thirteen point two. Um, make a motion to pass, uh, ordinance number twenty four dash one zero three seven and ordinance adopting the final combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance for fiscal year beginning April first, twenty twenty four and ending March thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Dave, move it. Second?
Second.
Move to second?
Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
President Everard.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
And President Don.
Yes.
Thank you, Ray. All right. Right here, a little bit here, we're at thirteen point three, agreement with Salem Sand and Gravel. Do you want to move to pass that ordinance then? Okay, so we need a motion to.
I'll do that. Or do you want me to read it?
Please.
Consideration of a motion to pass ordinance number twenty four dash ten thirty eight and ordinance authorizing the execution of the agreement with Salem Sand and Gravel Inc. pertaining to their convenience, covenants, what is that?
Convenience.
And the district's acceptance of the simple title to certain real estate in, in unincorporated Hebron Township.
Dave, that's, we need a second, second. And Sean?
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas.
Yeah.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, we have a thirteen point four. Uh, need someone to make a motion for the triple net lease agreement.
Okay, my day, motion to pass resolution number twenty four dash twelve, a resolution to authorize the execution of the First Amendment of triple net lease pertaining to MCCF and their real estate known as the Camp Lakota and Lechner parcels, parcels, excuse me, adjacent to the Brookdale Conservation Area.
Need a second, please? Yeah. Jack, yeah, we'll get that. Move in seconded?
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thirteen point five, gift agreement with Land Reserves LLC. I'll make that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To approve ordinance twenty four dash ten thirty nine and ordinance authorizing execution of the gift agreement with Land Reserves LLC pertaining to their donation of these simple title to certain real estate in unincorporated Hebron Township.
Dave, you want to do your second there, please?
Sure, the both, yes.
The move is seconded?
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas.
Yeah.
And President Don.
Yes. Great, thank you.
That gets us through most of that business. Fourteen point oh, Detective Director's report.
Okay, a few things, so we had some really big, nice gifts and, and acquisition pieces that the district has been looking at for a very long time tonight, so that's just amazing, so I just want to say, thank you.
Yeah, we went through it real fast, and, yeah, but it was a long time making.
Absolutely, and I just want to thank, uh, both Ed for vision and, you know, John worked on this too back in the time and Val in closing the deal, uh, and just the working of the board and that relationship to, to cultivate, uh, these types of opportunities. So I think, I think that's awesome. Um, that also brings me, I got a call from Representative Reich today, and Representative Reich has also been championing our FAP four twenty, uh, transition, and so he was in a meeting this morning, wants us to prepare a letter, but has been doing the work behind the scenes to help to facilitate that and to get that in their hands. So we hope that that good news kind of goes on this streak we've been having.
Maybe explain what the, for, FAP.
FAP four twenty. So, um, there is a, a road that was dedicated by the state of Illinois to, well, they had purchased an easement. And as over the years, the district had acquired property around, uh, where this easement exists. And the vision was at some point there would be a pathway of.
Route fifty three.
Through, Route fifty three, across up into Wisconsin. Lake County has a similar thing that's going on in their area as well. And every year that this, every time that this study would come up, the environmental concerns, et cetera, would come up, that this is not the place. And, uh, so then it would fail just on the fact that the natural resource. So our request was, um, since it's been shown time and time and time again, um, that natural resources through our park, and now that we own all of the area, um, not the whole corridor, but we, the area within our park and our area.
Within McHenry County.
It's in McHenry County to do that. So that was our ask, we had previously come in front of the county and gotten their support for us to continue with this quest. And, uh, Representative Reich has been, been working that. So, um, we'll prepare that forward and hopefully want good news to protect that in perpetuity, um, with that area. So that's been going on. Um, was it, uh, McHenry County, um, Council of Government, the village managers in the county, we get together every other month or so just to exchange ideas. And today, um, it was a finance directed focus meeting, uh, and during that they had, uh, the treasurer's office there talking about a lot of the QR codes that they use when you're getting on the train or parking lots and how those are being scanned from a cybersecurity of placing something over that and then everybody scanning that and ultimately.
Oh, wow.
Um, so giving in and, you know, those cyber threats and things like that. So gave something to pause and encourage maybe other ways of communication of how we're all accustomed to seeing that, but just like we click on our phones or things, not to press a link through the phishing, it's all around us. So challenging times with technology. Um, there was also discussion, um, the mental health board has a question on the ballot or the county has a question on, I don't know which, which one of you guys had the question about?
Yeah, I guess it would be the county.
County. Advanced a question, so, uh, there was just some general education about the facts of that, just in case anyone had any particular questions, but if it's successful, um, and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, obviously the county would be reducing because it's an aggregate with the mental health board, with the county's levy. And he would reduce your levy by, you know, if it shifts over on the sales.
Yeah, basically, we would eliminate their tax on the levy for the real estate taxes and it would go on to the sales tax.
And then the tension of the county would be reduce your levy.
Recipients of, yeah.
Yeah, so there was that, education wise, and then there was discussion just on legislative agendas of what's been discussed and obviously with cannabis, um, and the new revenues and how that's changing, um, because, uh, just as more, um, communities get the cannabis, what maybe came to certain communities is being dispersed. And as other states pick this up, just, it's so, the discussion, because there's been some legislative discussion on when they're looking at the transfer tax, maybe the municipalities do not need to have that, but in essence, the cannabis is not a sustainable taxing, uh, which they believe is not a sustainable, uh, place of revenue.
Yeah, stream of revenue.
Stream of revenue for them, so there was a discussion on that. We don't partake in any of that, uh, with alternative revenue, um. And there was some discussion on the new left, and mushrooms, not fun guy, but mushrooms, and, and maybe that's a new revenue kind of focus of a new way that's.
Mind altering mushrooms?
Yeah, yeah, but not to the point of psychedelic, but whatever they do to, for energy or whatever, but, uh, I will mark it on, on that front. Um, but anyhow, it's a good meeting to kind of see, uh, how all the municipalities and kind of what they're looking for and what they're advancing. Uh, the environmental defenders, I mentioned this last week, um, looking for individuals that would like to attend the dinner, let me know so I can reserve a spot for their annual meeting, uh, it's, they're a great supporter.
What was the date on that?
Uh, it's Sunday, March third, and it's in the afternoon. Um, from, uh, three o'clock, uh, is social time and then dinner, and then they'll be done at seven. So that's going on, and then anybody on Friday that would like to join me to meet with our legislators in Vernon Hills, that's going on Friday morning with my Association of Park Districts. So if you're interested, um, you know, on that front. And, uh, I, I do want to thank the staff, uh, and for their, um, planning the event and for the board members that did attend. Um, it was great to get together with everybody, you know, one of the bigger things that I think, um, over the years, when we were cutting dollars and trying to balance all the different ends, one of the things that, that we took away was some of the employee engagement of doing parties or being able to through the meetings or being able to, you know, invest in uniforms, little things, but those little things, they add up and they mean a lot, and when they build community and, you know, if it was something to whether to go back and do it again, I would have fought harder to say, hey, these are areas that are not up for discussion as much as we're making very difficult decisions. These are things in the big scheme of things or, or something to, to stay, it builds community. So anyhow, we corrected that and, um, I, I agree, going forward, those are important things to, to support and celebrate, I respect.
Good.
And, uh, that's all.
All right, so. We're going to, well, we don't really.
If there were any questions on some of the reports, you've got, uh, just highlight, you've got the strategic plan, the project status report, our dashboard, foundation numbers, and so happy to answer any questions anybody has on that. Um, internally, we are seeing some efficiencies, we're using a new program called the Hive to capture, and so that's just helping with data entry and tracking and pulling things. And this next upcoming year, we will be moving over the project status in our dashboard into that same, um, into the Hive. And, uh, again, trying to make things more efficient, uh, for our staff that are doing this work, working harder and having more data.
All right.
Any question for Elizabeth? Yeah. Um, for Brad or I'm not sure for who it would be, but, um, when it was up north this weekend, even though it was colder up there, they're actually making syrup. And I'm just wondering, given the warm temperatures, is that going to impact anything that we plan to do with? Was it March, right, that they get served?
Yeah, I, I have an answer for that, the sap can run and then shut off and then run and shut off depending on what the weather is, so. Every year is different kind of sap run.
Obviously surprises our weekend.
I'm starting to see them pop up on the trees right now.
Oh, are you?
Yeah. Yeah, all around Crystal Lake, around Fort Manchin.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. People are putting the buckets to collect syrup. But they're bags now, they're, they're, I don't see buckets anymore.
Two, yeah, I've seen the tubes and then sometimes buckets. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, they, they started two weeks ago out there, and the guy that, the guy that, one of the guys that's, uh, he's not part of our fishing group, but he comes, he's like a neighbor, and he stopped by, and, and he's been making syrup for two weeks, and like, he said, it'll, now that it's got cold, you know, the three days we were there, it really got cold.
Yeah.
It stopped, but he had been making it for two weeks, and he said it would start up again, but he didn't know what the net would be between that starting and, and stopping.
Well, we're supposed to, yeah, have sixties, what, the next day or two? Yeah. Crazy.
He said, by the way, he's been making it for like thirty seven years, absolutely never earlier he's ever sold a sap run.
Hopefully we don't miss the dates here, we still have.
Yeah, right, with our program.
Our program, so.
Yeah, they're all in, in March, right?
They're in March, yes.
Yeah.
Two weekends.
I think it's like nine to eleven.
So we've got that, one other thing, I just update the board, so we have a, a response to public notices and, and there is a lot of uptick, I think, with more development, things starting all over the place, so we're starting to see more of these, but there is one, there was a public hearing tomorrow with the Zillion Board of Appeals, and we'll be preparing correspondence to go over, um, because it did represent enough to trigger us to have a response, even though we're not a regulatory organization, and this is property that's adjacent to Glacier Park and the Nipper Sink, uh, creek area. The district had commented on this previously when it was requesting a special conditional use for a campground. In this case, um, they're proposing solar, and so, um, then we talked briefly, and we had not run it through our, our matrix yet, but I do have that information, so I will be sharing the facts, putting in correspondence, um, to present to them, just to leave for the record on that, and then ultimately see where it's at, but mostly I think it's a buffer, we have to burn, we're adjacent to it, we need to burn our property enough for wildlife lanes, trails to be able to go underneath the fencing, um, you know, hopefully they're planting, uh, pollinator species, native species, curious on what they're doing now, but.
Most of them are, but, yeah.
So that, anything else that, that, depending what our, our conversation will be for.
Good. And we, and we'll have somebody there for that?
Is it going to be the president there?
Okay. Good. Um, we went to trustee reports and stuff already, so. Um, so someone just did a public comments number two. Any public comments? Anything out there?
I don't see any. Anyone with any hands raised or anything.
Okay.
Doesn't appear that anyone has anything on.
Well, we'll probably, I'll call for adjournment in a second here, we have a decennial committee, uh, meeting scheduled for six P M. So we have a few minutes to wait for that, but we can just take a break. I think so, uh, may entertain motion for adjournment? Hey, Pat, and a second by Linda.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurer Gaten.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas.
Yes.
Secretary Prince.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes.
Adjourned.